Study session, the Emeryville Center for Community Life.
So Chair Coomerly, just to clarify for everybody, this means we will not be having a meeting on November 29th.
Okay, thank you. Correct.
No need for one.
Fine with me.
Okay.
Good evening, Commission. This is the second study session on Emeryville Center of Community Life. The first one you heard was in April. Since April, in terms of the schematic design, in terms of site planning, in terms of programming, it has not substantially changed. What has changed is that the project has moved along in terms of various details getting flushed out, particularly the flow plans. The architect team went and got input from the various stakeholders who are actually going to be using the site and kind of fleshed out the flow plans. And with that, also, of course, the building massing and building materials to a certain extent. What I'm going to do is I'm going to just highlight the key differences between the April study session and what you have in your packet today. And I'm going to leave it to the applicant in terms of time and non-repetition to kind of go through the whole project in one flow. So as I mentioned, the planning commission did look at this project in April and had certain concerns. And these have been outlined in the staff report, and I'm just highlighting it here. Concerns relating to co-location of elementary and secondary schools. There was concern regarding design of parking on the 47th Street as well as 53rd Street for slightly different reasons. And the desire to see the community commons retain certain amount of flexibility so that it could be used by high school students during daytime. And a need to look at some kind of creative phasing whereby existing school facilities could be used in the initial phases. We have asked the applicant, these have not been responded to in the plans or the packet. And we have asked the applicant to kind of address these concerns that were raised by the commission. So you'll be hearing from them as to where they are regarding these concerns which were expressed by the commission. In terms of new information and changes, there's been a slight increase in flow area in the Phase One by about 10,000 square feet. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. They have included a color and material palette at this time. The main material is going to be painted plaster or stucco along with some fiber cement board. These will be the main ingredients, main materials. And the plans right now are not very clear on where the stucco is being used and where the fiber cement board is being used. And I understand that this will get flushed out as the project moves forward. There've been slight changes in the parking on the street. Two ADA stalls have been added at the corner of 53rd and San Pablo. And street parking on the north side of 47th Street has been reduced by 16 stalls in order to retain the border that serves the gym currently. And five spaces are also being removed on 53rd Street to accommodate fire truck access. And so there'll be some, a couple of curb cuts there. Bicycle parking has been added at six different locations. Regarding the pedestrian bike path, there is a path that has been identified in the general plan which runs along the Western Property Line connecting 53rd and 47th Street. This has been eliminated. They have included a landscape plan. Again, I'm going to let the applicant get into the various details of it. But the key things here are there are going to be certain trees that will be removed, 19 and 47th, six within the site. The redwood trees within the site will be retained. The trees to be planted are a lot more than they're going to be removed. 47th Street is 20, 53rd Street, which has really no trees at this point. They'll be adding 16. A few more, a few more, like about seven are going to be added along San Pablo Avenue. This is in addition to at least about 26 trees within the site itself. The other change that has happened since the last time you looked at this project is regarding access. And this access is not so much the access for community and school entries. These kind of remain the same. These are the community entrances, and the purple are the school entrances. But what has changed is the boundary within the site between K-28 and a high school. So this red line that you see kind of differentiates the areas for K-28 and the high school students. And the key difference is the commons are not open to the high school students during the school time. A new element has been added since you last saw this project, and this is the concept of community wall. This is a new concept, and it is something that the architect team is in the process of flushing out. They solicited input on this concept at the community meeting on Saturday. It runs north to south, and what is envisioned, it's envisioned as a sounding board for residents where program activities and current events could be communicated. It could also highlight significant cultural and historical information about the city. And a lot of other options were kind of introduced at the community meeting. And I'm going to let the applicant kind of summarize what was, what they heard at the meeting. So this is sort of on 53rd Street. This is looking at the community wall. So at the highest, this is, will be at its highest, it's about 46 and a half feet. And it varies between 24 feet to this high. In terms of staff comments, the staff report outlines a list, a laundry list of additional information that is needed in order for this project to move forward. And these, I'm not going to go through all of them. But basically, they include details regarding design, street improvements, especially the treatments on 53rd Street as well as 47th Street, stormwater plants, and a bunch of other stuff that outlined in the staff report. The report also includes a list of requirements that will be associated with this project. This is more for an, you know, FYI to the applicant and to the public in general in terms of what kind of conditions that can be expected on this project. And these include things like sidewalk improvements, lighting, traffic signal, changing of radius at the corner of 53rd and San Pablo. Staff also has, continues to have some concerns regarding traffic circulation and loading. However, we expect this to be sorted out in the traffic study that will be done as part of the environmental review that LSA is going to be doing for this project. So we are hoping that all those issues and doubts and concerns that we might have would be looked at by FER and PERS as part of the CEQA review. The same goes for shadow study. This is a typical element that is included in the environmental review. So we hope to see that information at that time and then take it from there. Regarding design, staff has the greatest concern on the San Pablo elevation, especially this corner of 53rd and San Pablo. We feel that this really needs a lot more work at this point. So that concludes my presentation, and we are looking for the commission to answer these questions regarding the design of the project, regarding the community wall concept, as you hear more about it, and whether the pedestrian bicycle path that has been identified in the general plan along the Western Property Line, should that be eliminated, and of course, any other issues that you might have. You would have received two letters on this project, one from Betsy Cooley and the other one is from Brian Carwell. And I would just like to add one thing regarding one of the comments that Mr. Carwell makes. And he suggests that the commission should condition any plan approval on firm commitments from the district regarding the future uses of NIAE's and Ralph Halvey sites. Just like to remind you, this is not within the commission's purview. So that concludes my presentation, and I will hand it over to the applicant, unless there are questions from me.
Actually, I do have a question. First, I just wanted to thank you for the staff report. I thought it was very well-written and very well-organized. I have a question about the library, which I know this question is not really in our purview, but it's going to inform some of my other comments. So to what extent is it a public library? Like, to what extent is the city supporting the library?
From what I understand, that the city and the school district has not yet made a decision regarding how public, the public library will be. So that is an outstanding issue that has not yet been resolved. The café, however, that is associated, will be open to public at all times.
Did you?
All the property belongs to the school district, is that right?
That is my understanding.
Because it said in one of these comments that the state architect, uh, school architectural board would be overseeing it, not the city building department.
Yes, as far as the building plans are concerned, that would be the state.
While the city is putting money into the Center for Community Life, the property and the buildings will belong to the school district, is that correct?
That is correct.
Did you do any studies concerning security on the site in reference to the architectural character and how it impacts security and safety on the site?
No, no, we do not, we have not commissioned that study. And I do not believe that that is being addressed by CEQA either. So if it's, if that's something you would like to see, then that should be our recommendation.
Thank you, Maru.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Deborah Lindro. I'm the Superintendent of Schools for the Emory Unified School District. And I just want to thank you for having us here tonight to, for this incredible milestone, actually. We're really excited about where the project is right now. And the ECCL, you all know, is going to mean so much to the children and families of this community. And it's been 10 years in the making, if you can just imagine that. Well, some of you do know that. And, but, but what makes this project really so incredibly special is the fact that it has had a tremendous amount of community input. And there's been a great deal of consensus building to get us to the point where we are today. We have an extremely tight budget now, as you know, and our timeline with our financing under the Qualified School Construction Bonds that we were able to issue that were very low-interest bonds, like almost zero interest from the federal government, makes this project, makes it necessary for us to complete this project within the next three years. We've added as many of the features connected to the full-service community schools vision and the full-service community as we possibly could. And we think it's pretty terrific, and I think you will as well. Stephen Bingler from the Nexus Partners is here tonight to go over those elements with you. And just very quickly, the library and all of our shared spaces will be referenced in a document. We're in a incubator program development work is being, is in the process of being done right now. And we'll be developing an MOU and agreement associated with how the, how the co-location and how the shared program and services will be offered. So, and we'll be happy to bring that back to you at a later time. The other thing I just heard mentioned was the whole idea of safety and security. Clearly, that is an area that we have been, have concerns, have had concerns about as well. And in all of the community meetings that happened last year, there were 13 of them. Many community members weighed in on what you're going to see. And you'll see where all of the security points, including our security officers and many, many community people, parents, elementary school parents, high school parents, wellness, health and wellness, Alameda County, there've just been a host of stakeholders that have been involved in putting all of these pieces together with the various viewpoints about safety as well. So just again, I can't, can't tell you how excited I am to be the superintendent of Emeryville at this, at this time because I think we're, we're all going to be a part of something truly amazing for the children and families here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephen Bingler, and I am with the Nexus Partners. I'm an architect. And I represent a number of people here. And I think I want to start off by just asking at least all the people who are part of the Nexus Partners to raise your hand because you may be hearing from some of us as, as we go forward. We all have a piece of the elephant. I want to start off just generally by seconding what Dr. Lindo just said. A little bit of background is that our firm does work all over the country. And our focus has been on schools and community schools for the last 25 years. We wrote the policy for the U.S. Department of Education around schools as centers of community. I have been involved in dozens of community schools, and there's not a single one in the country like this one. This is the, this is the most advanced, the most complete, the most community-engaged community school that I've ever participated in and that I've ever seen. So I think that the Emeryville community should really be proud of the fact that this project is underway and that it is of such quality, I think, that it's going to be, when it's finished, it's going to be unequaled in this country. Having said that, we don't have all the, all the, all the details worked out yet. And so we appreciated all of the comments that you gave us. And in fact, my comment was to those, that we were in violent agreement with almost everything you said and everything that you asked us to do. So what I'm going to try to do is to go through a presentation of, some of which is already, some of the images you've already seen, but I'll try to go through those a little bit faster, if you will. And I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to balance out how much detail I go into because we could be here for a long time if I answer every single one of your questions I'm sure that you have in your mind. I'm going to try not to rush through it, but I'm also trying not to drill down into too much detail. So if I do, please stop me or slow me down or give me a signal or something. But I do want to be sure that a lot of, I realize that we're here at schematic design to answer a lot of detailed questions. So I don't, I don't, I'll do the best I can. And if you have additional detailed questions, I'll try to answer the ones that you asked already along the way. And if you have other ones, you know, we'll be happy to entertain them. This is a work session. You know, we're here to, we're all designing this project together. That's the way I think of it. So without any further ado, let me see how we're going to move this thing forward. Okay, good. All right. I think you're familiar with the overall site, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about massing. We've been through conceptual design already. You've already reviewed this conceptual design. Most everything is pretty much the same and more or less in the same place as it was in the final conceptual design. And with the classroom to the south, the community service is mostly on San Pablo. And the community multi-service center on 53rd and San Pablo. And the K-28 classrooms in the three-story building at the center of the site. And the school multipurpose room also in a similar location with the gymnasium being the existing gymnasium that's just being refurbished, and the same as the ball field. This is a diagram that shows Phase Two. I'll flip those quickly. This is Phase One with parking on the, on the ground in Phase One. And this is Phase Two with, illustrating the additional facilities that would be added in Phase Two. I realize that we're here today to mostly talk about Phase One. So if there are questions about Phase Two, be happy to answer those. But at this point, well, we can drill down as much as you would like on the site and area tabulations. I know these have been reviewed by the staff. The, the site plan for Phase One is pretty much the same as I mentioned as it was in conceptual design. The Phase Two is this area in plan now, rather than looking at it in the model. You can see it in plan where it would be located. We have a detailed landscape plan that's included in the detailed drawings that has also been submitted. We have begun to look at some colors. It's really early in the, in the game for us to be thinking about colors. But because there's so much community engagement and community almost always cares about colors, we thought maybe now's a good time to start that conversation. We have a materials palette, mostly stucco. We have a limited budget. So we have a lot of exterior wall surface because this is not just one building. It's a building that encloses a lot of public open space. So we have a lot of exterior wall. We do plan to use as many sun-shading devices as we possibly can to increase the sustainability of the project. So we've given you some illustrations of colored concrete, stucco, landscaping, some shading devices and those kinds of architectural features that we'll be talking more about in detail. It was already mentioned that we've added another element in the design, which is, was, in this presentation is called the community wall. But as of Saturday, it's now called the community canvas. And probably within another month, it might have another name. We don't know yet. It's, it was said earlier that it's an evolving idea. It's a fairly new idea. And so it's, to say it's evolving is actually an understatement. We have found a way to do it so that it's actually, most of that wall is actually building wall. It's already going to be built. We're just articulating it differently. There are a few pieces of it that are freestanding, and so I'll get into some of that later. But anyway, the, we have had this first meeting with the community. A lot of really great ideas have come up, and we'll talk about some of those later. Some of which are murals, some of which are even mathematical and science and all kinds of. One person even mentioned a solar clock, a sun clock, because that wall faces due north-south. So it offers the opportunity for, to track the sun, almost like a Stonehenge kind of an idea. Certainly wouldn't look like Stonehenge, but there's no reason why, from a physical point of view and an astrological point of view, astronomical point of view, it couldn't function like Stonehenge. And those are just a few of the ideas, the community bulletin board, you name it. I won't go into all the details, but certainly that's, that's, that information is available. The building elevations are in development, very much in development. In fact, I do want to say that all of the drawings that you've seen so far are drawings that were in development when you saw them. And we have listened to some concerns that you gave to us and also some that we heard from the community. And at the end of this presentation, I'm going to show you some new drawings so that we can all be up to speed with this train as it's moving forward. We're trying to react as quickly as we can to your concerns. So, so in the spirit of that, we, we would like, if possible, to throw some newer ideas on the table for discussion today, rather than just review the ideas that are already a couple of weeks old. The, these are too small for you to look at, I think. We're going, we have actually a lot more detail that we'd like to show you in some three-dimensional drawings, if you will. So I think that would be a better use of your time. But, but those elevations do illustrate the heights. And this is a view from San Pablo Avenue. The two-story building on San Pablo is the one that we, I think we've always talked about. We've always heard that that's what would be the correct response. And, and now we have a two-story building on San Pablo. We have a two-story building on 47th and a one-story, or one and a half-story building, actually on 53rd, and a three-story building at the center of the site. So I think that, we feel like that the massing has responded a lot to a lot of concerns that have been issued and raised along the way. And that we're now at a place where we can talk more about the details. This is an entrance into, from 47th Street into the high school. You can see on the left, the, the south-facing end of the community wall or the community canvas. And you can see an elevator in that, sort of embedded in that wall. On this first floor is the entrance into the high school, to the high school side of the project. The high school portal and some gates going into the high school that can be closed off. I'll show you some details of those later on. The second floor is a student terrace. I'll talk about that a little bit later and how that connects to a lower terrace to the west. And on the right is the high school. I do want to point out in this image that there is a security office. The security office is just in this entrance. It opens directly into this entrance, and it's just on the right. And on the corner that you see of the high school is also the reception area for the high school. So we have lots of eyes on this corner, lots of eyes on this entrance. And we also have some control mechanisms in the form of gates that can, can be closed off at the various times when they need to and open when they need to. This is the corner of 47th and San Pablo. It has library, this is actually a corner where the, the south end of the library opens up. I do want to point out to you that we are, this, we are working on this corner now. I don't have a new rendering to show you of this corner, but our plan is to actually open it up a lot more than it is now with glass, a lot more kind of wraparound glass so that when you're driving down 47th, you can look into the library on the first floor. The second floor is mostly the high school. And so I do want to give you a little bit of a heads-up on that. You'll see for, the first time in this drawing, also planters that we're creating to, first of all, to create a soft edge, but also to filter stormwater around the building as a part of our energy conservation and our sustainability measures. We have, you also see in this image, as you will see in other images, a lot of solar shading devices, specifically in the form of overhangs. And we're trying to make those overhangs as much as we can, a kind of a way of also breaking down the scale of the building, creating more interest in the building. We're mostly dealing here with a lot of horizontal and vertical surfaces. And so we're trying to break this, the scale, keep the scale down to Emeryville scale as much as we possibly can for 125,000-square-foot building. This is the portal that, the entrance from San Pablo into the community commons. On the left is the library café, the library and the library café. On the right is the ECCL, the, 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 the Emeryville Unified School District Office is on the ground floor on the right. And then upstairs are the health services and community services on the second floor. The main entrance into those facilities and programs will be at the other entrance, the other community entrance that will be located further down San Pablo. I do want to say about this, you can see those gates. You'll have to squint a little bit, but there are gates in this entrance towards the back. The, similar to the gates that come into the high school. We're also planning on closing, having other rolling gates that can, or folding gates that can, are lighter and can, can also close off the community library, what we call the library plaza at night. And, and so, but during the daytime, that plaza could be open to the public or it could be closed, those gates could be either open or closed. There's a lot of detail in the gating of this project. And I'm going to try to take a little bit of time to bring that forth to you in this presentation. This is a little further north on, on San Pablo. And this is essentially the front door to the community multi-use building. On the left, you will see the, I see the lobby to the community services wing of the building. As I mentioned, the school-based health clinic and As I mentioned, the school-based health clinic and family services is on the second floor. And then the community services welcoming center on that corner would have a lot of glass and openness to the street, as well as eyes on the street. On the right of that opening into the community plaza is the senior lounge. And so, there would be people there a lot. In the center of this plaza is the, is actually a game room, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. This is actually the view, which we're not so happy about either. From the corner of Fifty-third and San Pablo, I'm going to show you a more up-to-date image of this view later on, at the end of this presentation, at least so you can see another work, another iteration of the work in progress. But on the left is the senior lounge, and on the right is the community multi-use area. And you can see on the right is the community wall. In this case, the north end of the community wall, which is for the K-8, pre-K-8, actually, access. And this is a little bit more further around the corner. You can see that entrance, and you can see now, yet, a third set of gates. These sets of gates operate very similar to the ones at the other, actually, three, four that you've seen, three that you've seen so far. One at the high school and one at each one of those entrances that we've already talked about, and this is the fourth one. The, there's also a Kinder Buddies, what we call the Kinder Buddies, which is the daycare, which is located right there, within easy access to their parents and drop-off and those kinds of things. And looking from the field side, we do have the school colors. The track is blue and the grass is green. It'll be green all the time because it's a turf, artificial turf. And those are the school colors. You can see in the distance, the back of the community use room, as well as learning gardens, which are located beyond the entrance that I just described. And you can also see an opening from this side into the community plaza. And I want to point that out, because there was some concern raised about the wall and about transparency of the wall, and can you really see from that plaza into the field? And the answer is yes. We're actually planning for most of those pieces of the wall that are not parts of walls of the building to actually be more open than closed, because we do want to encourage visual connection in every way. We don't want any dark corners in this project, so we've tried to take heed of that. The building in the middle is the K-8 building. You can see the entrance on the left. There's a science center, K-5 Science Center at the entrance, which also is in good, close proximity to the learning gardens that are located just to the north. And on the right, to the south of that K-8 building, is the school multi-use building. And I do want to point out, when we get to the plan about, but I want to point out to you now that the ground floor of that school multi-use building is mostly glass. And it's also mostly glass on the other side as it faces the plaza. So if you stand in the plaza, you can look through that building and see all the way through to the field, and vice versa. In fact, we imagine that during community events, that that building would probably be wide open. And you could actually circulate through it. I'm imagining all kinds of booths and everything set up in there, with things happening on the field, things happening in the community commons. This is the second-floor terrace that's above the high school entrance. Now, we've made a full circle around the building. We're back onto the Forty-seventh Street side of the building and the south end of the community canvas wall, wall canvas. Not to confuse everything, but the second floor has a high school commons that has a stair, a grand stair that goes down into a first-floor component of the high school commons. So the high schoolers have this kind of split-level commons area, if you will. And this is pretty much the primary, it's located at the primary crossroads where all of the high school kids are going to congregate. And if you just go a little bit further to the north from the view I just showed you, you get to the high school, part of the high school terrace that overlooks the community commons. On the left, you can see the, at least the beginnings, and I do want to say the rudimentary beginnings of the community wall. It's a little spare at this moment. We have a lot of new ideas, some of which we'll share with you today. At the far end of the community commons, you'll see that there is a game room. And this side of the game room, there's a stage. One of your comments were that, was that maybe the amphitheater that was shown earlier wasn't as flexible as it might be. And in fact, we did get the same feedback from our meetings with the communities, with the city services staff. So they asked us to eliminate the amphitheater and to make it a flat, grassy field so that they could have more different kinds of functions going on, more flexibility. And so we have some hard surface, we have some grass surface. And as you see in this image, actually, that space functions during the daytime as a, the K-8 play yard, separated, as distinct from recreation area, because as you'll see later, there's a separate recreation area for K-8 and a separate recreation area for 9 to 12. And this is actually the play area for the K-8 grade levels. Oh, and I do want to point out one more thing. As you can see on the right, those are the gates that I talked about earlier. Our idea is that those gates will actually fold, they'll actually pivot. So when they're open, you don't even know it's a gate. It's really kind of just a plane that's going in the same direction as you are. It's not a door that has to be opened and closed. It's a piece of a wall that actually folds back. And there will be doors in it, but at any rate, that's the concept, is that we don't want to have this place feel like, you know, that you have to fight to get in or you fight to get out. But at any time in the day, this place can be completely locked off or completely opened up, depending on the time of day and the use that's taking place there. This is a circulation path. I think that's been covered already, about the community access and the school access, high school access from Forty-seventh, lower school access from Fifty-third, and two locations for community access from San Pablo. One of the comments that you made is he felt like that the San Pablo face should be the front door. And so, I think we did a little short, rough calculation that the front door on San Pablo is actually, the opening of the front door on San Pablo is about somewhere between 25 and 30 percent of the facade is actually open park entryway, vestibule, if you will, into the community commons. This is the second-floor plan, same circulation issues or diagrams. So now we're at the first-floor plan. I'm not going to dwell into, drill down into too much detail on the individual rooms, but suffice to say, the gymnasium has a lot of new facilities that will actually make it state-of-the-art in terms of lockers, and the pool will be upgraded and all of that. As you can see, if you look on this plan, at the place where the high school community room is, the community multipurpose room, you can see what I was talking about, how it actually serves as a gateway between the community commons and the athletic fields. And when those doors are open, it's another gateway. So you actually have this kind of open gateway that goes all the way from San Pablo through one set of gates and then through the building and out into the open space. We've tried to imagine any number of different iterations of how the site could be laid out. And they're really too many to even talk about. Does anybody have any questions about the plan? Can I just stop right now and say, does anybody want me to point out anything in particular about the plan that might...
Yeah, could you, I'm still confused on the access to the fields and from like Forty-seventh Streets, and how the public accesses the field.
Well, I mean, the public can access the field from Fifty-third Street. There's a gate on Fifty-third Street. The entrance on Fifty-third Street is the, essentially the plaza for the elementary school during the daytime. And it feeds straight into the field. There's also access from the field. Oh, okay. I was waiting for it to light up. The, the entrance from Fifty-third opens out into the field. The entrance from Forty-seventh actually goes, the access to the field is here, in this area. So the points of entrance into the field are from here and also from here.
And that'll be open on the weekend, or how does that work?
On the weekends, the whole site would be open.
Okay.
So you could actually access through here and around into the field, or from here, around and into the field, or from the street into the field, or from this street into the field. So there are actually four different places where you could go through a gate and get into the field. And presumably, the gates would be open at that point. And like I said, you can control which gates are open and closed. You may want to keep two gates open and two gates closed. That's up to the people who are managing the site. Our job is to try to figure out how to make this site as flexible as possible.
Are there provisions for bus queuing? And I mean, I assume you're going to have sporting events and there'll be opposing teams coming in buses? And I would assume elementary students would be dropped off via buses? I don't see any queuing for buses.
That's right. I can get to that in just a minute. Are there any more questions about the, I'm going to call it the Architectural Plan?
Yeah, could you... Oh, go ahead.
Could you point out the bike parking? It sounds like there is multiple places for bike parking and...
We have bike parking at all four entrance locations, and we have a total of 90 bike spaces. And it's, part of those are long-term and part of them are short-term. The long-term ones will be covered, the short-terms will be open.
And what percentage do you consider long-term?
I don't know the answer to that question. Can somebody answer that question?
Yeah, it hasn't been completed yet, sorry. I'm Brett Kelly, part of the Nexus Partners. The exact numbers haven't been completely nailed down. It's roughly 50/50, long-term, short-term. Roughly 50/50 inside the gates compared to outside the gates for security.
Can you tell us how the loading has changed since the last iteration?
I'm going to ask Brett to talk about it.
The general diagram hasn't changed. The K through 8 is loading from the north. High school's from the south. We have got more specific plans at both edges on how they're actually going to work. Diagrammatically, they still are the same. The, I don't know how familiar you all were previously, as far as the diagram.
Were you talking about loading docks?
Loading docks. Remember, there was...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant kids loading.
Children, no, no, no. There was, specifically, there was a concern that there was not enough loading last time. I'm sorry.
If you see the number eight on the plan, we have a loading dock there. We're going to need administrative, sort of, parking management when they are expecting large trucks to come in. But we do have a drive that accesses straight off to the loading dock directly. And any long, like semis and whatnot, will have to queue on the road and be scheduled accordingly around bell times, et cetera.
Okay, and the school multi-use is also the cafeteria, is that correct?
That is, that's right.
Okay. I do want to point out, along the way, the answer to another question, because you just reminded me that, this thing is not working.
It's stuck on the menu.
I do want to point out, the question was raised about bicycles in Forty-seventh and also about bicycles in Fifty-third, so I do want to address that. Forty-seventh Street is designed to meet the requirements of a Class III bicycle street. And it has 14-foot lanes, so it meets that requirement. The other thing that was raised was a question about whether the perpendicular car parking was deep enough to accommodate car bumpers. The car's going over the bumper, and the car spaces are 22 feet deep, so that allows for enough space that the cars aren't parked over the sidewalk. So that's the answer to those two questions. On Fifty-third Street, there was a question about whether Fifty-third Street was going to be accommodating the green street requirements. And our answer to that is that the curb hasn't changed. What we have done is we've taken away the retaining wall, and we've actually moved the fence back 20 feet. And you'll see in the drawings that there is a green space in that 20-foot setback. That's a landscaped green space. And I was just over there the other day thinking about how great it would be if I lived across the street from this brand-new linear park that's going to be coming in. So I think we've addressed that to the degree that we can address it. If there are other issues that we can take on, we're happy to do that.
I have a question on Fifty-third about, I'm sorry, on Forty-seventh. How is the pedestrian access going from west to east? It seems that there's a sidewalk and then it stops in the parking lot, and then the sidewalk again to the back where the pool and the gym is. So how does the general public get around?
There's a sidewalk here along the street. There is a curb cut, two curb cuts for the parking that goes in and out. But otherwise, the sidewalk is there. In fact, it's a very wide sidewalk, and it actually has a little median in the middle of it. And it's a sidewalk on one side, sidewalk on the north side, and a sidewalk on the south side. So we've tried to be generous with that sidewalk.
Is that, are you speaking of where the trees are?
Yeah.
And you sort of walk between the trees like it's an alley?
You walk on either side of the trees.
Okay, got it, okay.
Okay, there's a landscape plan further in we can show you, but we tried to make this not, as you might imagine, if there's a sidewalk on the north and a sidewalk on the south, then an alley of trees in the middle, so to speak. We feel like that we've tried to make that experience as comfortable as we can. There also to the north, there is the student access from the high school all the way through, and also on the weekends, of course, the public access from the commons all the way through to the field here, as well as to the exercise area for the K-8 group that's located here. And on the edge of the field, there are berms. And in that berm, we have, that separates the field from the play space, or from the K-8 exercise space. And then there's a space for movable bleachers along that berm. Our plan is to, as you'll see in the landscape plan, our hope is to have a lot of these things that would normally show up as obstacles, actually, even the play spaces, be built and sculptured into the landscape. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Plugging around that slide, can you tell us about the pink area next to the multipurpose room?
This area?
No.
Room that looks like a stage?
Yeah.
Where?
So just to the north, it's the music room I think he's talking about, yeah?
This area?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the music room.
Now, is that, does that open up to the multipurpose room?
Yes, it's a stage for the multipurpose room. It's a music room, and when it's not a music room, it's a stage for the multipurpose room.
Okay.
And then the middle of the multipurpose room is a movable wall. And then on this side of the movable wall is the high school cafeteria. And on this side is the elementary school cafeteria. And the high schoolers get to their cafeteria this way, and the elementary schools get to their cafeteria this way. And never the twain shall meet.
Can you show us on the plan, the areas that would be available for, as outdoor space for the high school students?
I'm going to give you a whole diagram just on that.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I'm going to make your day, hopefully.
Yeah, two slides away. So we might have to ask if there's any questions on that slide before we go there.
on, on that slide before we go there, but.
Can you, uh, that main entrance on San Pablo where the doors pivot?
Sorry?
That, the main entrance on San Pablo by the café and the library where the doors pivot?
Yeah.
Do, does the entire length pivot?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, uh, our plan is to have that pivot door at every one of these major entrances.
And how wide are each, is each door?
Um, well.
I mean, hopefully?
We haven't quite figured it out yet. Don't hold us to it, but I'm guessing it's probably four or five feet, and it just pivots?
Yeah.
Right?
Just as a scale reference, what we're showing right now is four feet wide pivot, so you'd get a, actually, eight-foot opening, which would be great.
Right.
And they would be operated manually?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um.
And I think, don't we have an image of what that could look like in here?
I don't believe we have it in this presentation.
Oh, okay.
We've had a bunch of presentations in the last week.
It was in the one at Grand, yeah?
I know.
Oh.
So special, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I, I guess I have, do have one more question before we move slides, um, which is, um, oh, I noticed a couple of inconsistencies on the plans. I, I think you maybe have already addressed them, but the, the one was the, was the courtyard with the amphitheater. Um, it looked like in some of the plans, there was an amphitheater, and in some, there wasn't.
And I think that you got, uh, might have had the amphitheater in there.
Yeah, that's a bit, is this working? That was a very recent change.
Okay. And then also, there seemed to be a discrepancy in the hardscape play area. One, one plan showed a single full basketball court, and another one showed three half-basketball courts.
That could be, um, I'm not sure, unfortunately, which plans we're comparing now.
Mar, do you know the answer to that one?
The, the most recent plan actually has a play soccer field. So, the, the point is, we have designated zones for the different age groups, and we're getting feedback from the faculty and whatnot, at what particular games and things are gonna be appropriate.
Okay, I think the one with the soccer field is the one with the, the full basketball court, so, thanks.
And, and just so you know, at every stage of development, we're going back through a whole series of meetings with teachers and with you guys and with everybody, so things are gonna be, every time you see a set of drawings, they're gonna be a little bit different, so thank you for pointing that out. Yes, sir?
Is this a standard-sized football field?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and the track in odd dimension?
It is.
Standard distance?
It's an, it's an odd dimension and an odd distance. Um, I think the straightaway is, is, um.
Yeah, the straightaway, we've made sure you can get the hundred-meter track. To get an actual race distance around the loop, you'd have to do an, sort of, an odd length, so we've been told that that's not necessary.
It's a little cleaner than the one that's there now, but it's still a little wacky. And most urban sites, I find, do have kind of what I'll call wacky tracks.
So, have you done a shade study for yourself yet?
We have not. We're using it in our design practice just to understand the effect of some of the shading, but we have not done an official shade study, no.
Ground level, second level, third level.
Might be able to get to his diagram. Landscape plan.
This is the landscape plan, so have at it. Any questions about the landscape plan? 'Cause we have the landscape architect right here in our midst.
There's various, um, pictures, some with trees in the community garden and some without, so I'm sort of wondering where that's falling at this point. Depending on which page you're on.
Depends on who you ask.
So, well, let's look at the landscape plan for where actually trees occur and learning gardens and all of that. So, your question was, where actually are trees occurring?
In the community garden, uh, on many of the elevations, there, trees are shown. And then, on the plan view, no trees. So, I'm wondering what's the?
Yeah, so this plan view in the community plaza, if that's what you're referring to, not the community garden?
Uh, the community, the, the plaza, yes.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, the.
Hernigard?
The large, uh, sort of.
Where are we? Number sixteen?
Number twenty-one and ten.
Number twenty-one, um, I would say right now is not treed. There is an element, this is now K through eight play. There's a sculptural element, and, um, where it stands right now, there is a grid of, um, a datum or grid of poles, um, which play, um, elements can be affixed to. And where there is a large specimen tree is actually in the café garden, the community garden, where we think that's appropriate. This, we wanted more openness and sightlines into the, um, grass-sloped theater piece here, or grass piece, um, with a stage.
What's the elevation change on the, I mean, how much of a slope is that?
We're actually looking at, um, two scenarios. One in which there is a slope, um, less than five percent, but we have accessible ramps and stairs that wrap it. Um, there's also an alternate where this would be level, so we're still exploring the pros and cons of those two schemes. Um, again, we're looking for maximum flexibility here for both play and also for ceremonial gathering, um, theater events. It's really a layered space, and it's gotta, kind of, work for all of that.
Is, is, are you considering using real turf or, uh, possibly?
We're considering bone.
Pony?
Pony. Well, you know, we have artificial turf here for all the reasons, you know, we've weighed and costed both, um, natural turf versus artificial, um, for a sports environment. Here, I think we would have some of the same concerns in ter, in terms of, um, is it wet? Can people really sit on it? We really see it as a casual seating environment when it's used by the kids. Um, so, you know, I think we're still looking at that.
Seems with the exposure that it, it won't get from the large wall on the west, it's gonna be pretty moist all the time.
Uh, it's true, but this is all southern-facing here, so we definitely will do some shadow studies to determine, um, what would be best, you know? This also functions as our stormwater and biofiltration, so we have elements, um, that wrap this, uh, grass element as well as other areas of the building.
Do you have any solar panels incorporated into your concept? Is there gonna be any goal of trying to be, uh, carbon-neutral or as close as you can get?
Our goal is always to be carbon-neutral, um, and we get as close as we can. And, uh, we'll be putting our shoulders to the grindstone to get this thing as energy-conserving as we possibly can within the budget.
What about grants? I mean, there are all kinds of federal grants, especially for educational facilities, to make them as green as possible. I think you can probably raise enough money to photovoltaic this whole place.
Well, I, I think that the school district staff has, has looked into a lot of that. I don't know what the outcome is, but, um, I know.
It should really be a sustainable lab. I mean, these kids are gonna learn sustainability much earlier than we ever did, and if they're the future generation.
Yes.
They've gotta save the planet. We already screwed up the planet. It's for them to save it, so, this should be a, a living lab, in my opinion.
It, it will be, to, to the degree that we can, that we have resources to support it, and, uh, I can assure you about that. We, we have not only our, um, the architectural intention and the owner's int, uh, client's intention, but we have one of the most advanced engineering firms, Integral Group, uh, one of the most advanced engineering firms in the world, actually, working on this project. They're, in fact, they call themselves Dark Green now.
So, can you give us some examples of the type of stuff that they're doing?
Pardon me?
Can you give us some examples of the type of things that they're doing that are?
Well, I'm, I've, we've talked about some of the bios, bioswells and those kinds of things that are been, being built into the landscape, and, uh, I can't really speak to the mechanical systems at this point.
I guess that I had a question in terms of the mechanical systems. Will there, would there be, um, allowance for future solar-wind connections to the building? I know that's a cost consideration, but it's also the kind of thing that you wanna build in, in the front end as opposed to tear it out and do it later?
I think that we should take that, if, if that's, if that's what you're suggesting, then, uh, I think we can take that.
I am.
Take that to the bank.
Okay.
Why not? You know, it's a question of, of, as I said, everything having to do with everything is a question of resources. And we're, we're, we have a limited budget. Okay?
Other questions? Keep going.
This is a more detailed version of the, uh, 53rd Street Green Way, um, Green Street. There is an attempt to bring back at least the vestiges of, um, Temoskull Creek on the surface. If that can fall within the budget, we are, um, very excited about doing it.
So, the twenty-foot, if you could go back to that last slide? The twenty-foot dimension there on 53rd, the setback? So, the, the twenty-foot isn't an additional setback from what's there now? It's, it's?
No.
Okay.
Well, oh, what's, what's there now is a, is a concrete wall that's on the south side of that sidewalk. And, and what we're doing is we're going, uh, uh, all the way back twenty feet from the edge of, uh, from the street-side edge of the sidewalk.
So, it's twenty feet from the street-side, not twenty feet from the?
Right, from the curb.
Right.
Uh, this is a diagram, uh, a, a school security diagram that shows you what part of the site is operated during school hours in phase one, uh, as opposed to the part of the site that's open to the public in phase one.
So, we've been very conscious about how to separate the populations. It's on. Separate, separate the population of, of children also, so we have the young kids being able to be cordoned off from the older kids, as well as being able to be cordoned off from the public. And so, that's what, basically what this diagram's showing you.
Could you show us how a student would be dropped off, public transportation? I'm a little confused as to how they, uh, is there a bus queuing area? How they arrive? How they unload?
You bet. So, essentially, the, the younger kids are queuing and arriving at the, at the north. They're filtering through the site coming south. The, the main body of the young kids' classrooms are up here where you see K eight. They have daytime play areas for K five, as well as, we're trying to have some, uh, designated outdoor learning spaces within this zone as well. And there, they have the possibility of coming over and getting to the library and art rooms without crossing paths with the older folks. The older folks are dropped off at the south. They primarily circulate straight upstairs. Most of the high school classrooms are on the second floor. And so, there's a large social space that's sort of, that's stacked in this zone. Um, so, there's social space and the hard courts on the exterior that they can then circulate up to the multi-purpose space in this direction. But then, there's a big grand stair that's got a, um, bleacher seating as well that takes them up to their classroom proper. So, we're really assuming that this is a hub for the high school activity.
So, at the north, the queuing occurs within the street, 53rd Street?
It does, and we're currently planning, uh, a roundabout at this end of the site, and with the intent that cars can queue coming back towards the east, and if necessary, come down from the west to turn around to come back to the east, so that, the kids are always being dropped off on the right side.
And there's no off-street parking right along that perimeter?
Off-street parking, no. There is street parking. We'll get a white curb at that zone, so that'll be timed around the bell times.
So, how are the K eight kids getting to the four-to-eight physical education play area?
The K eight kids, so there's doors that come out the back of the building here. I'm sorry, that's very light, but there's, they kind of see the stair zones here. So, they literally come out the backside of their building, the east side, I'm sorry, the west side.
They go out the east side to play, and they go out the west side to recreate.
There you go.
So, the only high school outdoor area is the social space?
The high school outdoor area, there, I, I wish this also showed the upstairs. There's a, there's a plaza upstairs. There's what we're calling social space, yes. There's hard courts, and I, I hate to say it, but I believe this is a little bit of a typo. This, this line should actually be here. This, this four-to-eight play area, is that, I'm sorry, my eyes are a little bad, but is actually supposed to be divided in half, so the, the high school kids. Yeah?
My name is Steve Kelly, I'm also with the Nexus Partners. A couple of things I just wanted to maybe clarify, uh, to make sure you understand that the commons is a K five place base. It was represented as K eight earlier. Um, and then, the play space that is labeled four-eight is actually the four-eight play space. The high school social area extends out, and to answer your question, Commissioner Moss, they also, the high school students would have primary use of the athletic fields, the sports fields, and so their combined social space and outdoor play space, if you will call it activity space, includes the, the fields and track.
So, they would be able to use the fields at lunchtime and other breaks, or, I mean, to, to congregate and?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you can go back to that last slide one more time. The nine-through-twelve social space, again, that's covered? I'm, I'm having a hard time visualizing what the space is.
It's, it's both. There are covered areas and outdoor spaces, outdoor, literally, outdoor spaces.
So, are there indoor spaces? Common area indoor spaces?
There, well, yeah, there are. This diagram was meant to talk about exterior spaces, so, yes, the multi-roost, multi-use space is.
Library.
The library, the.
Congregating spaces. For both teachers and students.
Okay.
Okay. Um, if, the only thing, the difference between this one and the next one is the parking lot gets filled in with covered parking, and above that, uh, phase and phase two, uh, additional educational facilities, including an auditorium.
So, then where will the social space be for the seniors? Or the, the high school, rather, sorry?
It actually becomes a larger plaza on the level-two zone in front of the auditorium, the new auditorium.
Um, this is a diagram that, that looks at the play area comparisons, um, just in case you're interested. Some people were interested, so we kept this in here, just in case you might be. Um, between the existing, uh, Annie Yates site, which is thirty-two thousand three hundred square feet, and the comparable, uh, spaces on this site are forty-seven thousand square feet for, uh, K to eight. Uh, this is a diagram that shows the floor area ratio between East Ceciella and, um, and the Annie Yates site.
So, the ten thou?
This is a diagram that shows.
The ten thousand square feet that was added since we last saw this? Where, where was it added to?
There, uh-oh.
Whoops.
A significant amount of it is the, is the plaza, which was for.
But that's not usable space, so we're talking about?
Are you talking about floor area? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I heard in the, um, staff's presentation that you added approximately ten thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Was that usable space, or was that outdoor space?
No, it's actually usable space at the request of, um, the educational staff. Um, there's a couple extra classrooms and things like that. It's all usable space, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Like usable space?
And, uh, one more, additional comparison is an additional one hundred and twenty feet of curb length, um, on the, um, K to eight drop-off compared to Annie Yates.
Could you just go back to the previous slide with the comparison of the outdoor spaces? Another, other direction. Yeah, that one. So, the, yeah, the, um, the sports fields double, they're supposed to be multi-use, multipurpose fields, flexible space, right? And the eight thousand square foot, the orange eight thousand square foot, it looks like much of that is basically walkway underneath the stairs or alongside the stairs. It doesn't really look like it's functional for outdoor recreation.
It's, it's outdoor, um.
Pathway.
It includes a, a garden, and, and a learning garden.
Yeah, at the, at the north side, but anyway.
Well, um, all of that, a, as we drill down to, to how that space actually functions, um, I think it, it, there's a lot of work to be done in the landscape plan with respect to how that space will actually function.
Pretty challenging how the sports fields are gonna sp, function. You're showing a baseball diamond overlaid on a synthetic turf, uh, football field and.
Right. Well, that's, it's the situation that exists now, is the overlayment. We tried every way we possibly could to not have that happen, but.
No, you just don't have enough space.
Uh, this is another. This is another diagram of the outdoor zones, outdoor spaces. I think we've talked a lot about that.
Can you go back to that real quick? I just want to be able to look at it for a few seconds longer.
We left out the nine to 12 on the lower green one, but...
Thanks.
This is a view that you've seen just a few minutes ago, but this is the view of the community commons during the daytime with the students using it and the gates closed. This is a view of the same space at night, when the community would be using the space and the gates would, all the gates would be open, or whichever gates are determined would be opened. There might be some event going on on the stage and lots of things happening around. Presumably, the cafe at the library would still be open. May even be something going on in the community use room. And the, I think this is the last slide.
I'm happy to see that that community space is now being used during the day for the kids and not just, yeah, that's good.
There's also the community multi-use space that's also open all day for the community on the north end of the site.
On the north end, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, now we're going to fly you around. So you can get a little bit better idea, I know, it's hard to read floor plans all the time. So we're zooming in now on the high school entryway, coming down on the Forty Seventh Street side.
Can you back that up? Run it again.
Were you getting dizzy?
No, I had a question.
There's the, there's the out-of-the-gates bicycles. This is actually the high school on the upper floor, the library on the corner.
We can pause it and start it, but, and then loop it, but can't actually rewind.
There you go.
Tell us where you want to stop.
Okay. It was over on Forty Seventh when we were looking through the parking lot, at the sports field, getting close, a little, maybe a little more. There you go. Stop. Okay, can you talk about how this sort of breezeway works between the parking lot and the senior, I'm sorry, why do I keep calling that the high school gathering space? Is there a fence there? What is that?
Yeah, there is. What you're not seeing in the rendering is there is a solid surface at the south or parking lot side of those columns.
And there's the stairwell here where the pointer is? And then in the four, in the, towards the south, that large empty wall is, no?
That's the elevator.
No, I meant right next to the stairway.
Well, that's a part of the yet-to-be-determined community canvas.
Okay. What's inside besides the elevator, anything?
I'm sorry, what?
What's inside besides the elevator on the west side?
There's a stair that goes to the left of the elevator, a grand stair.
It's just a wing wall, stop.
Under this...
Yeah, right in there.
It's actually a hub of high school lockers.
Okay.
Trying to create the hub of activity, literally right in this knuckle.
Okay, great.
You're broken.
So you're seeing district, or I'm sorry, high school admin offices below and high school labs above.
Can you stop for a sec again? There were, on one of the pictures, it showed seat walls around Forty Seventh, and on this, it isn't. Is that still part of the idea?
There's a variety between seat walls and just bioswales. And this edge, we're trying to actually create, you can see there's a wider sidewalk. We were expecting a larger flow of traffic, so we're, there's a tenuous relationship there between how much people are going to, how much people are going to move. So I think that, yeah, seat walls when we can, and hopefully incorporate them within the bioswale.
Sort of thinking, yeah, more along Forty Seventh than San Pablo necessarily, but maybe both. That corner seems, could be activated, okay.
We're swinging around now, seeing the library below and high school classrooms proper, but...
Are we on San Pablo now?
Yes.
Aw. Cut out Fifty Third corner there.
If you didn't like it the first and second time. You can see that sidewalk that I talked about.
Where's the indoor bicycle parking in relation to the outdoor here?
Right around the corner where the lockers are.
Okay.
Okay. Back to the show. We're about ready to see the cafe below, and again, high school classrooms above. And you're seeing now the library court and major portal into the site, and you can see the community multi-room straight beyond. And there is actually an axial relationship that you can literally see from that portal straight through the commons, through the multi-use room into the sports fields. So we're trying to create that transparency there again at that point. This is the community welcome center and community courtyard. Senior center there on the right, and the grade school beyond.
And you can also see through here, all the way through to the ball fields. Even though the so-called community wall is there, it's wide open.
Can you stop it for a sec there?
Pardon me?
Stop. Ah, it's okay, never mind.
Sorry.
So can you speak a little bit more about the corner of Fifty Third and San Pablo, and your ideas for that?
Actually, maybe now's a good time to do that.
Go a couple forward. There you go.
This is not the answer. This is one step closer than we were before, where we had a corner coming at us. What we've done here is to actually create a rounded edge, a rounded corner that can become either a work of art or a sign that says Emreville, or it says whatever somebody wants it to say, it's a logo or whatever. We're a long way from knowing what that's going to be. But on the right is the community multipurpose room, and on the left is the senior lounge. And so what we think is that this is an opportunity for a lot of sort of lush landscaping, probably flowers, color. So this is the next iteration. It's not there yet, but it's the next iteration.
Where's your flag?
Oh, good catch.
I don't see any flag. I don't see anything that says this is a school yet. That's what the visual cue I'm missing. I'm driving by and I'm, you know, looking, I wouldn't know it's a school.
It's a...
I forgot to ask, what, well, I don't, if you were going to respond to that, I don't want to cut you off, so...
I don't know.
We don't know where that is yet. We are working on it.
The flag, it's in flux.
We are aware of the issue.
Flag would be a good place to start, probably.
I forgot to ask, what happened to the STEAM Center?
So the STEAM Center is the entire campus. The concept, literally, if you noticed, as the K-8 drop-off starts with a learning garden. Right inside that door is their dedicated science room. On the high school side, it's the same thing. Science is going to be evident right over the front door. Art is at the heart of the community commons. We're really trying to make the entire facility with a STEAM ethic, essentially, rather than a knuckle within a larger facility.
And that echoes a curriculum choice that the school district has made?
That's where it came, yeah, that's where it came from.
Are we losing...
This is the new, the next iteration of the portal into the community plaza. So I just wanted to throw that up here because it has a different fenestration along San Pablo. It's more of a rhythmic, and the glass is a little closer to the street. We will have some solid walls in there, because it's not a retail street, it's an office, it's really an office spaces. So this is the next iteration, and we're now looking at those overhangs, and should, maybe we'd be punching holes in some of the overhangs and create a little bit lighter feel, a little bit more articulated feel. We're trying to get, we're not, it's never going to be arts and crafts, and it's never going to be completely contemporary. It's going to be somewhere in, hopefully, some, a place that really respects the history of Emreville. Both the houses across the street, as well as the monumental buildings of the city. So this is where we are at this point. In the distance, you can see the K to eight building in the back. You can see the game room, actually, right straight ahead, and the entrance into the community services lobby on the left, and the senior lounge on the right. So this iteration of, the last iteration of the senior lounge was a solid wall. This is, iteration is all glass. So you can see the direction that we're going in. We heard you. What we heard you say is open up San Pablo a little bit more to, between what's going on inside the building and what's going on in the streets, so we hope you're...
The community canvass is a very important part, I assume. It looks like it ties everything together.
Yeah.
You've got an opportunity in Pixar to start to collaborate with one of the world's foremost leaders in digital technology. I can see this wall being a digital, ever-changing storyboard.
Yeah, one of the community members brought that up in the meeting the other day, about shouldn't we have something digital, solar clock, digital, all kinds of stuff. We're collecting ideas, so we'll put that in on the list.
But speak to Pixar.
Okay.
At DeepPockets also. Could be their contribution.
Can you talk a little bit more about what this community sort of landing pad, welcome center, it's lovely, it's light, it's full of windows, which I adore. But is there any programmatic thoughts about what it will be besides a stairwell?
Oh.
Yeah, well, it literally is the welcome center. So they will be able to redirect folks to tell them where on this large, fairly large community site they would like to go, whether it is, you know, for an after-hours class or going upstairs to the Health Resource Center, et cetera. So it's, this is the distribution point, and both printed material and folks staffed at a desk there in that room.
Is there a mezzanine around it, or how does that work?
So what, the stair that you're seeing actually takes folks up to the Family Resource Center and to the Student Health Center.
But is it open, the second story, to this, to this corner here?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
And also, can you talk a little bit more about the corner and Fifty Third and San Pablo, and what that community multi-use room, there we go. There's no eyes, you know, no windows there. So is that, can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah.
Yeah. This, I think this image is a little deceiving. Literally, 30 feet from the corner, you have a senior center, right? You can kind of see the windows there on the left, and it's a little farther. 40 feet to the right is a huge amount of traffic going in and out of the K-8 facility. We understand that literally on the corner, there's no eyes.
It's like, it's the presence from driving north to south. That's the first thing you see, is that.
Yeah.
So really needs work. Okay. This is better, though.
I think that we need to explain that the entrance into the community use facility is from the plaza. And so they need to have a wall at the other end where they show things on, put things on. So they don't want that to be glass. They want it to be a working wall. So that's why it looks like what it does. And we'll, as, as I said, I think this is the most challenging part of the whole project, to be honest. I think that the other entrances are kind of coming around. This one's a little more stubborn, but we'll figure it out.
We will have public comment. I wanted to make sure that the applicant has a chance to fully finish their...
There's only one more image I'll show right here.
And it is a study session, so we're just kind of, so possibly if the public has questions that need to be answered, it would be great if you could answer them also.
For whatever source, this is the newer, updated image of the, of the, what we're calling the library plaza. Similar kind of articulation. And you can see the gates in the back. And in this case, they're open, and in this drawing, you can actually see all the way through the community, I mean, the high school, I mean, the school multipurpose room to the ball fields beyond. So I think that's a good place to stop.
One more, one more question on this, the senior...
Center.
Center, which I understand is like a room?
The lounge?
Yeah, it's essentially just the senior lounge. The senior center in town is actually going to remain. This is just a touchdown place essentially for that particular community on the site. So it is, it's a room. It's a place for them to call home, seniors to call home on the site.
I don't really understand touchdown. What are they going to do there?
Play checkers.
If I could, so it is a touchdown space. That means it's just a place you go to sort of rest, get a cup of coffee, a glass, you know, a tea or whatever it is. The multipurpose room next to it, the community multipurpose space, will be programmed for activities, including senior activities, so there may be exercise classes or whatever the particular community service programs might be. And the senior lounge is really a place for seniors to basically pull out and either wait for their programming to begin or follow up with, and relax afterwards.
I was just reminded that a large number of parents are also seniors. We're all kind of getting there, aren't we?
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope. Any more questions?
I'd like to let the public speak then. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And you may be called back.
I do have one question of staff, to go back to that. I don't know if you want me to wait until after the public comment or ask it now?
Ask it now.
So I have a question, actually, for the city attorney. I'm hoping you can tell us kind of to what extent the school district is, to what extent does the, is the, does the school district require city approval for a project which meets the educational responsibilities of that agency?
So as your staff report highlights, the interface between the planning commission, between the planning commission and the school district is that this project is for you for design review, and for a use permit. So those are the approvals that you will be ultimately asked to consider. Very similar to the same sorts of land use decisions that you make for any other application. So it's, so you'll be commenting on design, on the appropriate use, parking, those sorts of issues.
Whether or not they're here, I mean, I understand they're here for those things, and we're considering those things, but don't, I mean, isn't kind of the land use authority of the city limited when, I mean, in considering projects which meet, you know, the, for, you know, which meet the educational mission of the school district? I mean, don't we kind of give up some of our land use authority, even though, I mean, even though they might be here in one way or another, asking for approval?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question. I mean, the kind of approvals that you'll be giving in terms of the designer view and the CUP are essentially the same as you would be doing for any other project. The fact that this is a school district that's asking for those approvals does not make a difference in terms of how you are going to form your decisions.
And the use itself is...
I guess it goes sort of to the difference between use and program, right?
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is, because I know for the, you know, for the use, we can't really require a, you know, a use permit, or we can't prevent the school district from building a school through the zoning, I mean, is my understanding. But, so that's why I'm curious, you know, to what extent the program is, you know, to what extent do we have approval authority over that, I guess?
I think it's pretty nonexistent. I mean, if a private applicant came before you and wanted to build an office building, and the office building was permitted by right in the zoning district, and all you had jurisdiction over was the design, which is similar to the case here, you wouldn't have the authority to tell the private applicant what kind of business they could run in their office building, or how they could... or how they could, what their business plan should be, or, you know, that sort of thing. So that's kind of analogous here. It's before you for design review, the use is permitted by right in the zoning district, it's before you for design review, and for a conditional use permit for height above thirty feet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Just a quick question. I was under the impression from one of the presentations I'd heard recently that the cafe was connected to the library, and that once they decided to close the library to the public during school hours, that it was going to close the cafe and the library. And so two questions. One is, I thought that staff had said that the cafe was going to be open, but the library was going to be closed. And I wonder if that's what's happening, or if they're both going to be closed. And also, when they talked about closing it during school hours, does that mean at three o'clock when the school opens, or is it, a lot of the kids, a lot of the students stay until five, and I think sometimes later than that? So does everything remain closed until the students are actually off of the site? Just two questions, basically.
I don't think that's in our hands.
Well, I thought the questions were from the architect. I mean, I thought that we were allowed to ask questions that the architect.
I would, yeah, I would like to hear if there has been any, how, how the library will be, is, was actually one of my questions.
And the cafe, the comment.
And the cafe.
Roy Miller with the Emory Unified School District and the project director for the ECL project. A lot of what you're discussing is still being determined in terms of the, the absolute answers. The cafe space is the most likely to be open to the public all the time, all the time that the facility is open, regardless of whether it's school hours or not. The conversation on the library, we are working, the, the whole project team is working with a couple of different types of library consultants to keep looking at this. First, there's the library consultant that's, that's working on the actual design, the kind of the physical architectural design. And then there's a, a, a separate library consultant that's working on how do we operate this thing? And what does it take financially to operate this thing? And they'll be bringing reports back within the next couple of months about several different models for how this is operated. The goal is to have it be a fully functioning public library and also still viable as a school library. The exact operating circumstances of that, we haven't completely designed. Number one, it hasn't completely been figured out. And number two, neither the council nor the board have heard any of the conversation about the pros and cons of one approach versus another.
Okay, thank you, Roy.
Hi, Ken Bukowski, just had a couple of questions and a comment. First thing is that, you know, this project has gone through lots of revolution, and we have not seen an operating budget. I mean, how is this going to operate? When it started, it was going to have enough facilities where money could be raised to help offset the operations. But with all these changes, I mean, who's going to pay for what? And how much is it going to cost? All these different changes, how do they factor in economically? So I think that's a concern. The other concern, I don't know how the seniors are going to be at the senior center and over here. It seems like, I don't know, the person that runs the senior center does a great job. I don't know how she's going to manage to add this facility to the workload. And then here on page nineteen of this design here, you're showing seating along the edge here on San Pablo Avenue. And, you know, if you've ever been down there late at night, you know that that might not be a feature that's, you know, desirable. I mean, how, you have these windows right out to the street. I mean, is there going to be a problem with graffiti or anybody breaking in? So those are my comments. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Malik. I live on 53rd Street, directly across the street from the entrance to the K-8 entrance. And as you said, it's going to be hugely busy. And you also mentioned that you expect people would go west on 53rd and make a U-turn and come back east, so they land on the, the right side of the street. Well, that's just not possible, either with the traffic on the street or the width of the street, or with parking. I don't think there's going to be any parking there. You said there would be a white, a white drop-off zone there. And what about parking for evening use? If you want community members to come, you're going to have to increase parking for them. So how's that going to happen? Thank you.
My name is Scott Donahue, 1420, 45th Street. When I looked at the plans for the social spaces for both the K-8 and then for the high school, and I looked at the existing for both locations, assuming that they're open at the same times and they're not sharing the same space, it looked to me a little bit like there was going to be less space per student in the social spaces and in the, the athletic area compared to what we have now. So I would like to see from the architect's a calculation of our existing social spaces and athletic spaces for both schools per student. So you look at it from a, what, what's it going to feel like if you're a student? Do you have more space in, in actuality? Do you have less? Or what, what is that ratio? So that's what I would be curious to see, what we're getting for our upcoming students as far as space goes. Thank you.
Hi, Jack Asher. My daughter attends Annie Yates', and I have concerns that the site is too small for everything that's happening there. But I'm very concerned about the amount of open space that is available in this plan. I, I simply don't think there's enough. Children need play structures also. They need four-square courts. They need to move, they need to run. And I just don't think that there's enough of that going on with this current plan. I'd also like to suggest that near the Kinder Buddies, you know, bike parking is wonderful, but you, you also might want to consider stroller parking, because parents bring their strollers in and they don't want to walk an empty stroller home. And it ends up, they take up a lot of space, and, you know, when you have to bring them inside, then you end up with a giant corral of them. And also, young children do ride bikes, so, and scooters. So it, it might be a good idea to have that dedicated parking for the Kinder Buddies area. And then the last thing, and I'm, I'm not sure if we were, if you were going to cover it in a subsequent part of the meeting, but I was wondering about the bike and pedestrian path behind the, the school site. Thanks.
So, I have a daughter at, at Annie Yates' elementary school, and we intend to, my wife and I intend to have her continue at the school district here. And I'm also concerned about the lack of space. There's not enough space here to have a K-12 facility. As a matter of fact, the state of California has, says that this project doesn't, does not meet the minimum standards for space. At the last meeting of the City Schools Committee, Mr. Roy Miller, the district architect, was asked about that, that very subject, that, that the, there's a problem because the, the state minimum standards are not being met with this new school for space. And Mr. Miller said that it's, it's okay, because there's a lot of urban schools that don't meet the minimum standards. But to that, that sounds like a lot of hand wringing. And to that, I say, okay, that might be true, but we're building a new school here, a new school. We're spending over sixty million dollars before financing on this facility, school facility. And so I don't think we should be spending that much money on a project that doesn't meet the state minimum standards for space for children. That's crazy. There was a lot of, more hand wringing here I heard tonight about community input and about how parents have been, are supportive of this project. But if you go to these community meetings, it's the same thirty people, time after time after time. Being one, one of the only two people in this room that, that are a parent of a child in the schools, I can tell you right now that there's a huge, great deal of ignorance among the parents at Annie Yates Elementary School about this plan to close Annie Yates' and move the children over to the site here. There's a great deal of ignorance about this. And to have these district officials be implying that that's not the case is sort of odious, then they don't, they don't know, because they don't, haven't run any studies on it. I know, because I've talked to parents about it. And so I don't really, I really don't appreciate the, the district officials implying that this, that the parents support this the way they have been, because, because that's not accurate. So the, so the stakeholders, the parents have been left out of this co-location idea that, that they're implying that they have not been left out of. And I, I don't, it's very irksome, and I, I just think that the, I think that, I'm not quite sure why they're not letting the parents know about this, other than the fact that probably they're concerned that parents would not appreciate or don't, wouldn't approve of the closing of Annie Yates', because it's a, it's a really nice school, and it's, it's kind of ironic that the school that we're closing, Annie Yates', does meet the minimum state standards for space for children. So we're going to be building a new, moving them out of that, a space that does meet the standards into a school that doesn't meet the standards.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Joshua Simon. My daughter started at Annie Yates' at kindergarten, and I now have a sixth grader and an eighth grader. The, I just wanted to, as, I'm also a school board member, and I'm sort of shocked at the previous statement. Let me just state that as a school board member, we're looking very carefully at what we have now and what we're going to have at the new school. And we're very concerned that in every way that's important to the teachers, that we have more space, better space, in better relationship to, between the spaces than we have now. We're not going to build a school that's not higher quality and better for teaching and learning than we have now. I also wanted to make one comment. There's been some concern about our creating space for seniors. I wanted to point out that we have a lot of kids whose guardians are seniors at the school, and finding ways to support parents and guardians who are older and create a place for the parents and guardians to connect with each other and with other services to support those folks is something we've been working on for a number of years. And this whole issue of how are we supporting it, I wanted to point out that a number of the programs that are going into the school are all programs that we've been running for years, and that we're now trying to find ways to bring them up to scale. With the Healthcare Act, for example, we'll have an opportunity to pay for things like the Wellness Center and provide broader services, not only for the kids, but the families and the broader community. So I think there's a number of things we're trying to do to make sure that this is a better space than the spaces we have, and to make sure that the spaces we have, as one of the people writing a letter has written, are also used for community uses, so we get the maximum benefit for our community in all of our community spaces. Thank you.
Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Kat Swift. I'm an active senior member of the community, active at the current senior center. And my only request is that, I appreciate that they, in the schematic design, they've put windows in the senior center, but they do not appear to me to be windows that could be opened because, and the reason I'm bringing this up is that there are times when we're at the senior center, it gets really, really stuffy and hot. And because of the age of the building, many of the windows are not able to be, actually be opened. We use books or a piece of board or the best we can do. And so there, I would like to see something that is somewhere between secure, so that there's not a possibility of people breaking in and stealing things. Things have been stolen through the senior center, like a huge plasma TV several years ago. And windows that could be open for ventilation, as well as the light factor. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. Wisher comments?
Actually.
Could we have, there, there were a few, number of things that were mentioned, and I was wondering if we could hear, say, about the ventilation and there, what are the other?
Minimum standards.
Some of, and also the minimum standards. I'd like to see, how far off are we on the minimum standards in terms of what California state and where we're at?
Like zero.
And San Francisco at, and, you know, sort of.
Like zero. I mean, so let me talk about the ventilation first. The architectural team can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're looking to achieve a naturally ventilated building, and the senior, the senior lounge portion would not be an exception to that. There, excuse me, there are lots of reasons for wanting to do a naturally ventilated building, not the least of which is making it a green facility. So I, I'm sure that that will happen and, and happen fairly easily. On the standards question, boy, where to start? For the most part, so let's talk about two different kinds of space. Let's talk about site and play space, and then let's talk about building program, interior space. And then let's also talk about recommendations versus requirements. Most of the information that you can get relative to, especially school facilities, is in the nature of recommended square footages, not absolute requirements. The reason for that is, you can imagine, there is a huge variety of conditions for site space throughout the state of California. There are places where site space is easily and readily acquired, and then there are conditions like Emeryville, where site space is at a premium, or San Francisco for that matter, or anything in the Bay Area. And the state has to cope with all of that. The California Department of Education publishes recommendations for site sizes and for specific play areas within those site sizes. They're guidelines and they're recommendations, they are not requirements. And the reason is pretty simple. The state recommendations are for largely suburban areas where school districts are constantly negotiating with property developers for new facilities. And so the state provided guidelines that allow a school district to have something to look at in order to work with those developers and say, you know, I need a ten-acre parcel, I need a twenty-acre parcel, I need a forty-acre parcel, depending on the grade levels served and the numbers of students that are expected to be served on that site. Those same standards and those same recommendations just do not apply to urban core areas. If you took the grade levels that the school district is considering, the K-12 grade configuration, and you took the number of students that the school district is planning to serve on that site, which at least at opening day is similar to the seven hundred and eighty plus or minus students that are in the school district currently, in order to meet the state recommendations, you would have to go somewhere in this city and find a thirty or forty-acre site. It's just not going to happen. So those kinds of recommendations are regularly modified in order to meet what is possible So those kinds of recommendations are regularly modified in order to meet what is possible in urban environments. The way that the state of California also structures dollars for school districts to both acquire sites and build facilities recognizes that. And so the state actually allows for, in their, when you calculate the cost of a project and you seek state funding to support a project, if you have what's considered a small site, and we will, and we do, and we have to, then the state actually gives you additional dollars to build multi-story construction, which they don't offer to school districts that are able to have single-story buildings spread all over a large suburban site. So those, I think, are relevant considerations when we talk about site size itself. And so the school district has always been looking to maximize the site size that we're working with, to minimize site density in terms of both built area and students per acre. And I think that the ECL project does exactly that. It's not a perfect solution, but it's an optimized solution in terms of what properties the district has at its disposal, and how it's deploying its resources in ways that deliver excellent educational program, and offer all sorts of other opportunities to the community at the same time. In terms of the actual built area, the enclosed square footage, again, the same conversation applies in terms of what are recommendations, what are requirements, and how does one optimize those kinds of situations? You can find any number of different standards, any number of different recommendations for various parts of the facility, whether it's the gym, whether it's the science rooms, whether it's the general classrooms, whether it's the library. I mean, you can go online and do a search, and you'll find a number of different, both professional and more legal entities that weigh in on those things. It is finally up to the school district to say, this is what we're doing, these are our standards, and this is how we want to run our school. And again, I'll also mention the way that school buildings are funded these days in the state of California. It used to be long ago, when I was first doing schools in California, that you went through a calculation with the California Department of Education about how much square footage you were going to build and how that related to numbers of students. And then there were also equations that put dollars to those amounts of square footage. Some 15 years ago or so, the state changed all of that, and they decided that it was much better, much smarter for them to base school funding, school construction funding, on the numbers of expected students. So schools are funded based on grant amounts that are given to what they call unhoused students. That grant amount is up to the local jurisdictional discretion in terms of how it's divvied up. The state felt that it was better to leave this to local authority than to provide some sort of equation that was a sort of come-one, come-all answer to these kinds of questions. However, there are good practice thresholds below which one should not go. And I know that the architects will stand here and tell you that things like Title V provide a pretty good set of guidelines in terms of those kinds of thresholds. The facility that's being designed and that's been presented to you tonight is in every way, beyond the requirements of something like Title V. And I could sit here and go through every single space and every single calculation. But I know that those standards, if it's that standard that you choose to comply with, those standards have been exceeded in all of those spaces.
So let me ask you a question. You have a very ambitious program, and you have a very tight site, and I see K through eight disjointed all over the place. There's a little bit here, a little bit in the corner, a little bit in the back. Wouldn't it behoove you, since you have a limited site and a very aggressive program, to exceed height limitations, get a variance, and combine things so that you create more open space? Because at the end of the day, it's one thing to comply with minimum standards, and then there's another thought to exceed minimum standards for the benefit of our kids. And I'd rather see us not just meet minimum standards or fall below, but exceed minimum standards. So why can't we build greater density in certain parts of the site to create more open space for the kids if that's what's lacking?
So I want to be clear. We're exceeding standards, not even minimum standards. We're exceeding standards for all of the built areas of the project, and the amount of site space becomes, again, an optimization exercise. The architects looked at things like four-story buildings, the cost premiums for those additional floors of the building, the increases in terms of code-required considerations, in terms of higher construction. You have to make a cost-benefit judgment here. And if it gains you a little bit of site space, but costs you hundreds of thousands of extra dollars to build the enclosed conditioned space, it may not be worth that trade-off.
But I see lots of little buildings here. It's like a village, a learning village, as opposed to consolidating in one or two structures and going up higher, because it's just as easy to build a four-story building as it is a two-story building. You've got a couple of additional stair runs and elevator stops.
It's easier, but the codes aren't the same.
Well, I would much rather look at a variance.
And the materials aren't the same, and the costs aren't the same, and the foundations aren't the same. And I mean, you could go on and on and on, and I know that a four-story building is more expensive than a two-story building.
Not if you build four two-story buildings, as opposed to building one or two four-story buildings.
So that all came, again, so I'm going to use this word optimization a zillion times. We've been through many, many architectural ideas for how to orchestrate this set of facilities. Most of those ideas were vetted in community conversations as well. And part of this was about being able to secure and separate certain populations within the site. So part of what you're seeing in terms of this campus layout is a strategy for how to do those separations, make all of that viable, safe, sound, secure, operable, and at the same time, get as much density within the site as possible, for the dollars that we have to spend.
So is there any kind of state oversight on this, somebody reviewing this for compliance and everything?
Yes, of course, on multiple levels. The California Department of Education will review our facility specification, and the, as we talked about earlier, in terms of authorities for building, the Division of the State Architect will issue all building permits in terms of code reviews and life safety requirements, all of those, those things that your building department does here for the City of Emeryville projects, those will be done by the State Division of Architect. And they will be done to a higher standard than is enforced in general in terms of projects through the City of Emeryville. Because it is a school, the safety concerns are even higher.
In terms of the outdoor play space, in comparison, I'm not sure if you've made the comparison to, say, San Francisco, just more densely populated. How do we fall in that area?
Well, I mean, San Francisco's a big place, and there are lots and lots of school sites.
Yes.
But even within our own community, and you saw them in terms of the, and you can look back, in terms of the floor area ratios and sort of site sizes, the Center of Community Life site is more than three times the size of Annie Yates. The site density at ECL will be significantly less than Annie Yates, back when Annie Yates was just a K-6 school. And I don't recall hearing any concerns about the site density at Annie Yates as a K-6 school. I have heard concerns about site density at Annie Yates as it's, in its current configuration as a K-8 school. There are lots of students there right now, and that's an interim situation. But I can't remember the exact number, but the ultimate site density at ECL will be about half, I think, of what Annie Yates was, even when Annie Yates was just a K-6.
That's including a whole football field, though, right?
That's true.
I mean, that's a big, sort of, open and empty space most of the time.
But it needn't be empty.
The K-8 will be able to use that.
Absolutely.
So that's a bonus, I guess. And also, Councilmember Asher mentioned about some play structures and the sort of lack thereof. Could you speak to that?
I think that's the stage of design that we're in. I know that the architectural team and the landscape architect are trying, their efforts are to be as creative about multi-use as we all are being in terms of general about multi-use of this facility. So what they're looking at, and it's easy to go to a catalog and pick a play structure and say, you know, it's one of these and two of those, and a slide here and a swing there. I think what they're trying to do is be much more thoughtful and creative about this, and to provide and build and design sculptures that are also play areas, that serve on multiple levels. There are examples of these kinds of places in San Francisco where I like being there as much as a five-year-old likes being there. And they're not slides and swings, they are much more creative environments where different people of different ages see different things and use it in different ways. And I know that that's what the, especially the landscape architect team, is working on creating for this project. So it's not just a, you know, a particular grade level, and their play equipment is here, and another grade level, and their play equipment is over here. Now, those population separations are important, but those creatively devised play zones can also be fantastic visual treats for adults if the adults are using the community commons as an event venue.
I have a question I forgot to ask the design team when they were up here before. But on 47th Street, there are, it looks like on the plans, they're showing some bulb outs. And I'm just kind of curious about those, because they, about the purpose of them, the function of them, because they don't really seem to line up with anything. When we first saw these plans in our last study session, I just assumed that they were for crosswalk purposes.
They're existing.
They're existing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Do you mean on the south side?
Yeah, on the south side.
That's in front of the AC transit? I think, yeah, they're just there.
Oh, okay. Because I think that is a, kind of a noticeable deficiency in the plans, is that there's not clear, I mean, I think the, there should be a clear crosswalk defined somewhere, because I think you're going to get a lot of crossing of that street.
Okay.
How was the decision made to eliminate the pedestrian path?
There was a lot of conversation in the community meetings about what that pathway was actually going to look like. There's a fence all the way down on the Emery Bay Village side of the site. It's a solid fence. They want to have a solid fence. There's going to be a fence on the school district side. So what we were about to create was an alleyway. And the community came back very strongly in opposition to a dark alleyway on the east side of Emery Bay Village.
I also want to point out to the planning commission that about a quarter of the length of that property line is where the swimming pool currently exists, and there's a large wall of the swimming pool, and when we started to, that creates an even tighter, darker alley. And when we started talking with the community services staff about the need to move that wall in order for this bike path to go through, community services staff was not excited about that proposition at all. In fact, if anything, they would like a larger pool deck, not a smaller pool deck. So the trade-off between the size of the pool deck versus the width of this bike path, there were just more and more reasons that that bike path was, it was causing more people concern than it was making people excited about having that feature there.
And so.
Oh, go ahead.
To that end, can I ask, I want to ask another question of the staff. So does that mean that this project would also require a general plan amendment then to move forward as it's shown to us today? With the elimination of that pathway?
Well, I guess there's a couple of ways to look at that. If you leave the path in the general plan, then it doesn't preclude it from being installed in the future. I'm not sure that not building it necessarily violates the general plan, as long as it is a possibility in the future. If it is not conceived of ever occurring in the future, then it probably would be a smart thing to do to just take it out of the general plan. That's kind of an ambiguous answer, I guess, but I don't think it's really a clear-cut
I guess I'd turn that around and ask the commission. I think we posed that question in the staff report, is do you feel a need to amend the general plan to eliminate that path?
I mean, I'll say I don't. I don't want to, I mean, I, you know, I wouldn't be supportive of a use permit for a project that I thought didn't conform with the general plan, which I think this doesn't. So, you know, I, that's my take.
I would agree with that also. However, I want to be practical about things, and I can understand the considerations and the limited space and things like that. But one of the things that really bothers me about this whole thing is the amount of traffic and the traffic concerns on 53rd Street and the conflicts with the Bicycle Boulevard that don't seem to be ironed out yet. And there's a lot of vehicle traffic that I don't feel like is really dealing with. And one of the best ways, I think, to deal with the vehicles is to provide alternatives. And breaking up the mega blocks is one of the things that we're really striving for in the city. So maybe something to explore would be breaking up that mega block in some other way, even though it's not necessarily on the city property, but working for a connection to Spur Alley or something like that. I don't know how that works, because this isn't part of the property, but.
Yeah, a couple of things I'd like to point out is, one is that, in fact, there is in the general plan another bike path shown through this block that does go along Spur Alley and then along the sort of southwest side of Emery Bay Village. So it's possible that that connection could be built instead of this one. I don't think it would be done in conjunction with the ECL project, but.
You're saying it would go through Emery Bay Village?
No, no. It's a former rail spur alignment that runs, kind of, I don't know if you can visualize Emery Bay Village, but it's basically a rectangle, except that its southwestern edge is kind of chopped off at an angle. That's because there used to be a rail spur there, and that former rail spur alignment is shown in the general plan as a Class 1 pedestrian and bicycle path. And it would connect from where 47th and Doyle Street have their kind of, you know, dogleg intersection, from that point at an angle running over to Spur Alley. So if that were built, it would provide a connection through this block, you know, instead of this one across the ECL campus. And that's also shown in the general plan. The other thing I just want to point out to the commission. The other thing I just want to point out to the commission, as you're probably aware, a mitigated negative declaration under CEQA is being prepared for this project by the school district as the lead agency. And after the school board certifies that, it will be coming to you for certification as a responsible agency in conjunction with your approval of the project. That document, which I'm not sure exactly where it is in process right now, but that document will pretty thoroughly analyze, I think, a lot of the issues that you're raising tonight. So, I mean, I think maybe part of the frustration here is that there's a lot of questions and a lot of issues, and we don't really know the answers yet because it hasn't really been thoroughly studied yet. But I think when we get the negative declaration, it'll, hopefully, we'll have a lot of those answers in it.
That'll have the TDM and.
Yeah, right. It'll have all transportation analysis and site circulation and.
Can we have a roundabout?
Right, all those things. All those things should be analyzed in the mitigated negative declaration.
Okay.
Could I circle back to where I started in the beginning? If you're done?
You may, please.
This is an amazing project. And I think if, it's like the fish, if you're in the water, you don't quite know, you know, what it feels like to be not in the water. But I've seen dozens of community schools all around the country, and that, like I said in the beginning, there's not one just like this. It's difficult to measure a community school compared against another regular school. There's been a lot of discussion about square feet of open space. But I think the proper measure is square feet per hour. And what's going to happen is that all of that square footage of open space, instead of being used from nine o'clock, eight o'clock in the morning until three o'clock in the afternoon, is now going to be public space. So I would ask you to think about how exciting that is, especially for the city, because you're getting a park at nights and on weekends. And in order to do that, it's very difficult to retrofit a school site to do that. I think Mr. Bryant just mentioned about the hundreds of decisions that have to be made. Well, there have been thousands of decisions and discussions in a very open community forum. Everything from the bike path to gates and security and, you can see, we've toiled over it. And I think this project has really gotten to the point of refinement like no other site that I've seen. So I think that when it's all said and done, and when it's all open, you know, we'll all walk on that site and say, wow, you know, it's, these kids are actually going to want to stay after school and hang out and do healthy things. Because the site is synergistic, you know? It's not just a school. It's not over here and a park over here. It's all of it together. So I kind of wanted to close at least my comments on a positive note, that we want to trudge through all of these complexities, right? And I hope that we're communicating to you that we want to do that and we want to do it collaboratively in this forum or every other forum. But I just want to hold out the vision, that the vision is an amazing vision, taken ten years to get to this point. And I can't wait till opening day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Brian. Come on up. Ten seconds.
I just want to say really quickly, the reason why there's a problem with space here, as the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room, is the fact that the district will not consider the idea that maybe we should not close Anna Yates. If this was not, didn't have the K-through-eight section, there'd be plenty of glorious space for the high school students. As a matter of fact, we would not, we'd be above and beyond the state minimum standards for space. It's because they're doggedly hanging on to this notion that there must be co-location. That's why the state is, this space is substandard vis-à-vis the state standards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I just note for the commission, before we get into a big debate about this issue, that this is not in your purview?
Comments wise, I guess, one of my big concerns when this came to us before, for our first study session, was my fear of this being value-engineered to death, kind of. Hearing that it was optimized, which kind of seems the same. And I'm kind of feeling that in the project. It's like, it's like it's been, I think you've done a remarkable job of working on a really tight budget, but I think the budget's too tight for what we're getting or for what we need to have. I look at the architectural finishes, I mean, it's like a stucco building. I think Emeryville deserves better than that. I think we should have better than that. I know it's not within the budget, but it's, I look at the building and I see kind of the apartment buildings, the stucco apartment buildings that I really dislike in Emeryville. And that's, that's the vision, that's the vision that this is creating for me. I'm also concerned with the size and the open space, and again, the optimization, that if we could have gone higher, and I have no problem with height, it's like, if you went four stories on San Pablo, that would be fine with me. But I think we're losing that at the expense, or because of the cost of the additional height, and I understand that, we are losing additional open space, and that concerns And maybe this is a program thing that's not in the purview, but I look at it as a design that I just don't necessarily see as functioning. It's like, I, my high school was a small high school, three hundred students, urban school. And I kind of did a Google Earth comparison of, like, looking at the footprints, and it's like, I just don't see how this works when the, when the structure for the high school is smaller than the high school that I attended, which was, you know, something built in the 50s and really didn't have the greatest of spaces. So I'm concerned about those things. Those are probably my biggest concerns, is the finishes, the trade-offs that are being made for the optimization that are taking away from possible additional open spaces. I think you're moving in the right direction. I think you've really done a great job with the budget that you have to work with. You're moving in the right direction on things for Fifty-third and San Pablo. I think that's a challenge there. Keep moving in the direction that you're going. I would like to see more of, more of an announcement that this is a school, that there is kind of an opening, a gateway off of San Pablo. It feels like a courtyard kind of thing. It doesn't feel like, like this is, this is the entrance. So with the questions that staff is asking, things about the design being, the project being acceptable, given the budgets you have to work with, I guess, I'm disappointed. I'm, I'd like to see something other than stucco. I have really concerns about, every stucco building that's built, been built in Emeryville, it seems like in the last ten years, has had structural failures and has gone through incredible expense to fix. So that's, that's a concern. Is the wall concept appropriate for the project? Yeah, I think that's kind of the design concept. I don't really think that's really a deciding factor. The pedestrian path is a concern. And I can understand the limitations on this. I think we have to, somehow, with this project, there has to be an opening made to cut up the mega block if it's in a different location. But somehow, we have to, we have to do this as part of this project, because this is, I think, is really critical to getting kids and parents to be able to walk to school, ride their bikes to school, and have better access to things. So I guess those are my comments.
Well, my feeling is that site is too crowded and always has been. And while it's not in our purview to save Anna Yates, if this site were developed as K-through-twelve, you could then have adequate open space, playing fields, and still accommodate the community facilities easily.
It is K-through-twelve, do you mean?
Excuse me?
It is K-through-twelve. Do you mean something different?
No. Develop this site as six-through-twelve.
Six-through-twelve, okay.
And leave the K-through-five where it is, and then everything would fit. But that's obviously not within our purview and not possible. As far as the architecture goes, I think he's done a great job in terms of fitting everything in, having adjustable, I mean, not rectangular spaces, but spaces open in different directions. I don't mind stucco. It depends on how it's finished. You have a lot of different ways you can do it. Also, it's not just a flat surface. You can have overhangs. You can have vertical melons. There's all kinds of things can be done to make the buildings interesting, but there's no way of getting around that we're squeezing too much on one piece of land.
Well, I guess I would echo the previous comments about the squeezing of everything in. I know that's a, it's a tough job, and you've done a pretty darn decent, some good iterations of that, and I appreciate that. That being said, as much outdoor play space as possible. I like the idea of the, the sort of multitasking play structures. I'm very excited to see that and what that, what that brings. The community canvas, the one thing, I'm really glad it's not called a community wall anymore, I think, big mistake. So I'm happy to see that become as transparent as possible at the ground level, please. And actually, I would say that throughout the project. As many windows as possible, natural light, creating a better space for all people, for everyone involved. And I did appreciate that comment about the natural airflow coming through the buildings as well, because that contributes to health. Colors? No, not so much. They're already dated, no good. I know it's just a first pass, but we've been through the wringer with colors in Emeryville, and I think less is more. And keeping things really clean, and, like I said, light and airy will be, will go a long way, because we are going up. I do wish we could go higher in reference to what Commissioner Steinberg's comments were, and I do understand about the cost, and I'm sure you have gone over that many times. There was a staff comment about the overhangs needing to be wider. Is that, did I get that correct, Charlie, or am I just making that up?
Yes.
Yes. That, that may be a good idea in certain areas, especially on the south side. I liked the stroller parking idea. I know we're maximizing our space here, and they do take up space, but that does seem like it would be a, and smaller bike parking would be important. So, those are my comments. Little disappointed in the aesthetics. I wish they were slightly more forward-thinking. They just seem like a little bit more of what's already here, so that's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Like, like the other commissioners that have spoken, I'm really concerned about squeezing too much on one space and trying to get, and mainly the concern about the lack of usable open space. I think that the courtyard play area with creative playthings is a nice, it's a wonderful idea, but I'm really concerned about the functionality of the space on the other side of the buildings, between the playing fields and the, all those areas. They need to be really worked out carefully because they're tight, they're small, there's a lot of hardscape and not too much place to put things in them, and I'm concerned that it's not going to work well. I'm concerned, a synthetic turf athletic field is great. It's really expensive, and it also, the uses that are overlaid, to the extent they're overlaid and the way they're overlaid, don't look like they're going to work to me. So that concerns me, that having the baseball and the football is just not going to be very functional. I really, I think that the community and school marriage can be achieved without having so, you know, it's, it's, again, that part of it is out of our purview, but I'm really also very concerned how many times during this conversation the low budget came up and the, trying to work with less budget. And I know that these renderings are preliminary, and they're as much massing studies as they are architectural design, and they're evolving. I'm just afraid they're going to be evolving in the wrong direction into simplifying and into nice materials and details being eliminated because of cost considerations. So it's, it's the same sort of configuration of concerns about having too much stuff, being too ambitious with not enough resources and space to do it in. And especially for me, it also is the functional open space and how that seems to be short, and I don't know that it, it hasn't been shown to me that it's going to work well, so.
Yeah, I echo the ambitious program comments, and I think that, since it's a community center, it's the nexus of the community, and I'm wondering what the impact will be to the community of this site, especially along Fifty-third Street. And the fact that buses can't queue up with safety, they have to more or less double park. I don't see proper access in and out of the site for pedestrians. I see conflicts galore, and I'm hoping you can resolve them. But I do think it's too ambitious of a program unless we go higher up and create more open space and simplify things a little bit better. I don't see anything that tells me that this is a school. If I'm driving on San Pablo, I would go by thinking it's an office complex. There's nothing distinguishing about it when, in fact, it's a learning village, and there's a great opportunity, and you've clustered the components very well. I mean, you've done the best you can based on the program and the other constraints. But I just think we're squeezing so much onto the site that there's going to be conflicts galore, day one. And my fear is there's going to be issues that will spill out into the community and impact the quality of life in the community, and this is a community center. So I'm concerned.
Well, since nobody else said they were concerned about cramming too many things on the site, I'll say that.
Thanks, Sean.
That's, that's my comment as well. I mean, I'm, you know, I obviously recognize the constraints of both the budget and the sites that the school district has, but I, you know, it's, I think this project kind of came out of somewhere very different than where it has ended up, that being, you know, the hopeful acquisition of additional land and, you know, I, obviously, those things haven't happened, won't happen, can't happen at this time. But, you know, that's unfortunately left us where we are with this crowded site. To also echo a few things that other commissioners have said, I'm, yeah, I also had some concerns about the corner of Fifty-third and San Pablo. I think that that is a gateway into our city if you're traveling southbound on San Pablo. So I think that the most recent rendering, the more recent rendering that was shown to us, I think, was, was an improvement, but I think there's still, still room for improvement there to really make that a gateway and to announce the project and to announce all of the different uses that are on the site to, to people who are, who are entering Emeryville. The, I find the San Pablo elevations lacking. I think there, there was, I mean, I will commend the, the design team for putting a lot of thought into that since the, the last iteration that we saw. I think the, the library plaza is greatly improved, and I think those two public entrances will, will function nicely. It's just, it's the building elevations, actually, that I have concerns about. I think the building still doesn't look like it's facing the street. It still looks like the, the side of a box. It has a lot of windows, which are great, and it should have a lot of windows, but it still doesn't look like the front of a building. And I'm glad to see that the architecture is, is evolving. I. I, I think that we still have a lot of evolution to do. I mean, I think kind of on the, on the spectrum of evolution, we're, you know, as far as the architecture, we're, we're out of the primordial ooze, but we're nowhere near being primates, you know? We're, we're, I think what, the, you know, to, I guess to continue my metaphor, the, you know, the, the first iteration that we had in our packet today was like, you know, the fish were becoming amphibians, and now maybe we've got, we've got reptiles with the, with the next go-around. But I think we still have, there's still a lot of evolution that needs to happen in, you know, from my perspective. And in terms of the outdoor space, in our last study session, I think there were a few, I mean, I know I felt this way, and I think there were a few other commissioners also that, I think kind of the majority of us were supportive of transforming the public plaza into possible usable area for the school. And that's been done here, but I just, you know, when I look at this new site plan, it, I just think kind of, well, where did the space go? And, you know, I think, you know, whether, whether or not you need our approval on, whether or not the school district needs our approval on that, that particular issue, I think we, the commission at the last study session gave a certain degree of license to, to the district to examine that approach, and to the design team to, also to examine that approach. And I'm not sure that it's, that, I mean, it wasn't done, at least in the way that I kind of envisioned it. I, I can't speak for the rest of the commission, but the, what I envisioned in kind of suggesting that was that, that that area, well, I think what's lacking in the plan, what still seems to be lacking in the plan to me is, is outdoor space for the, for the high school students. I, I think that there, I think that there, there seems to be, you know, I'm fairly comfortable with the amount of outdoor space that's, that's provided for the other students, and I think depending on how those spaces are designed, they really, they could be very functional, and they, they could work great and serve the needs of those students, but I just don't see enough outdoor space for high school students to congregate in during lunch, to, to sit and have lunch together outside. I mean, there's, they have half of a multipurpose room, and there's, you know, just as I'm flipping through these drawings, the terraces that are intended for that use look, look very small to me. So I'm really concerned about that, and it's been said that they would have the track area, but that just doesn't seem like a quality space to, you know, to, to be socializing in. What else do I have? The, the pedestrian path along the, whatever it is, the western boundary, from my perspective, is a necessity. I think that provides a critical, a critical pedestrian and bike link, and it's, you know, it's, it's something very similar to the, to the pathway that the, that the planning commission and the city council required of EBI, the private school across the street. And we just, a couple of months ago, I think, approved the, the design of that pathway, and I, you know, I think if, yeah, it's very similar, and I think if, you know, if we're going to require the, the private school to provide something that's shown in the general plan, we should, we should expect that also from the public school. The community, well, I guess we're calling it the community canvas now. I think it's a, it's a really interesting idea. It's really intriguing to me. I think it's going to depend a lot on the execution. I think there are a lot, there's a lot of opportunity there. I'm not sure that a, that a wall with a, you know, a solid mural on it is, is going to achieve the, the goal of that space. I mean, it's the, the irony of a, of a wall, which by its nature provides a barrier, as something which symbolizes unity and community, is not lost on me. So I think, but again, it's a really intriguing idea, and I think it really is going to depend on a lot of attention to detail and, and in that design solution. And then I'll just conclude by saying that, just moving forward, I would just hope that the, the project would be equally driven by the educational needs of the school district as well as the, the other community-serving uses. I think, you know, well, obviously, this, the, you know, this is the school district's property, and it's, it's largely their project, and, you know, a large part of it is providing a school for our community and providing a home, you know, and a, and a quality learning environment for our, the students of our community. But in addition, it, you know, it does provide other facilities for the community. It provides a swimming pool, and it provides community spaces. And I just get the sense that the, that the school is, is, is more driving things at this point, and so I, I guess I would just caution more of a balance. I mean, for example, the, the library, I think, is a great opportunity. The, the fact that that is not worked out at this point is a little, you know, I'm a little concerned by. I would just, I would hope that the, the city council and the, the school board would be able to, you know, start work on that MOU soon, obviously, but well, because that, you know, I think that, that's something that should be driving the project rather than the other way around. And so that, generally, that's, that's a lot of things, and only some of those things are in our purview, but that's, you know, since this is a study session, we get to say what we want, so those are my comments.
Does staff any, have anything to add at this point? No?
That's a lot. Oh, I think.
Well, you have, you have some comments to consider. I really hope that we continue to move forward in our iterations and move up the evolutionary ladder, and create an inspiring, uplifting space for the entire community and for the learning of the children, so, of our city. So please take into consideration and continue on. Thank you. Okay. Is there anything else, or can I adjourn this meeting?
Well, you have Commissioner, do you have Commissioner comments? Yes, you have Commissioner comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Are there any additional Commissioner comments? Have we...
No comment.
Spoken enough, okay.
No comment.
Meeting adjourned, then. Fine, thank you.